Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October 18th, 2011. It's 9:00 AM with the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flagrant American Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DiStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approved of the minutes of the October 4th council meeting and the October 11th council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
I have a question on the October 4th meeting.
Give us a page reference.
Page, let's see, page, just on page seven.
Page seven.
Just to clarify some language in there on where it's the last, it's just above where the motion was made by Councilmember Lewis, where Mr. Landon explained the last two items. And you look at the last sentence, maybe there was a little problem there where it says the motion was made to table further discussion, those portions of the structure relating to athletic fields and to bring to a workshop the rest of the fee structure. And I guess what's confusing to me is are we, are we going to workshop that particular item or did we, or have we just passed, we just laid it on the table? Because when I looked, when I read the newspaper the other day, it appears as though we had tabled it, and I didn't get the impression that we were going to read the newspaper to discuss this further. So I just need some clarification on that particular paragraph.
Well, I think the intent was to bring back to council that those portions that were not controversial, not discussed, and that the athletic field fees, we were going to refer that back to Leader Services Committee, creation of a sports council, and that that would be brought back to us at some future date.
Okay.
Well, that's the intent.
That's the intent. Well, okay, because I didn't get that from reading that, and when I read the newspaper, I was really confused, because the newspaper gave the impression that it was tabled, and that was it.
On the following page, page eight of the minutes, page nine of our agenda, third paragraph down, I'm not sure that I ever used the word eminence in the sense that it's there. I think probably a phrase of the balance of the account, not eminence. Any other additions, corrections? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing October as Vision Awareness Month. Mr. Meeker, take your glasses with you to the podium.
Yes.
Does somebody here accept this, Vision Awareness Month? Whereas, understanding the effects of vision loss is essential, and whereas obtaining knowledge about current laws, rights, skills, and abilities of persons with visual loss who are blind will enable this population to have equal access to services, businesses, and activities benefiting them and the entire community. And whereas, as the public learns more about Americans with Disabilities Act, greater opportunities will become available to persons who are blind or visually impaired. And whereas, all residents are encouraged to seek and learn information about the abilities of persons who are blind or visually impaired, to learn the most effective way to provide assistance and to increase their knowledge about the rights and laws that provide assistance to this population in fully integrating them into all aspects of society. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council do hereby proclaim October 2011 as Vision Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens of Palm Coast to educate themselves on the ways to assimilate those who are visually impaired into our everyday quality of life in the city. Adopted this 18th day of October 2011, John Nets, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing the month of October as World Polio Day. Mr. Lewis. Better not behave yourself. Better not that.
Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio education initiative with the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and UNICEF to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas, polio cases have dropped by 99% since 1988. And the world stands on the first, on the threshold of eradicating the disease, thanks to the efforts of Rotary associations throughout the world. And whereas, to date Rotary has contributed more than $1 billion, U.S. dollars, countless volunteer hours to the protection of more than 2 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary is currently working to raise an additional $200 million toward a $355 million challenge grant from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas, these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas, there are approximately 111 Rotary Club members in the three Flagler County Clubs sponsoring service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in which, in our local communities and abroad. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Palm Coast and City Council does hereby proclaim October 24th, 2011 as World Polio Day, and encourage all citizens to join with Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Adopted this 18th day of October 2011, City of Palm Coast, John Nets, Mayor.
My name is Rick Staley. I'm the president-elect of the Rotary Club of Flagler County. On behalf of our President, Bill Butler, who's on vacation, cannot be here today, we would like to thank you, along with our other sister clubs, for raising the issue of polio. And it's amazing what, when, when the world really gets together on what we can accomplish when we work as a team. There's only, it was down to three countries that had polio. There's now a fourth country that's had one case resurrected, but that's pretty good. And we actually have a member in our club who suffers from polio and can, you know, tell you about the iron lung that he had to live in for many years when he was young and so forth. So, thank you for raising this, and I don't know if Tim or the other presidents would like to say something, but thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for everything that Rotary does. Agenda item number four, an ordinance relating to the Volunteer Firefighter Retirement System Trust Fund. Mr. Reichman.
This is Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, amending Chapter Two, Administration, Article Six, Retirement Division Two, Volunteer Firefighter Retirement System and Trust Fund. It's amending Section 2, 526, definitions, amending Section 5, 2, 531, benefit amounts and eligibility, amending Section 2, 543, repeal or termination of system, amending Section 2, 544, domestic relations orders, retire, redirected payments, exemption from execution and non-assignability, providing for codification, severability of provisions, repealing ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, State Council, this is a second reading. At your last meeting, Ray Brett gave you a presentation. Just to highlight, this does not have an impact on our career of paid firefighters. This is strictly a small pension fund for our volunteer firefighters. It is paid out of the charges that are attached to your insurance, homeowner's insurance, to help pay for the cost of these type of programs for our emergency services personnel. The actuarials indicate that we are, have more money than what we need for our current expenses, and with this proposed increase from $50 to $65 per year, per month, per year of service, that we will still have a very healthy balance in this account. There's never any guarantee, but all indications are that this fund is fully funded, and this increase will in no way jeopardize that. At this time, Ray, who worked on this, is obviously no longer with us. Charlie Esposito, President of the Volunteer Group, or at least a representative, I don't know if that's still your title, Charlie, but is in the audience to answering questions, and also Chris Quinn could answer questions, if you have any questions at this time.
Council questions?
No.
Seeing none, we'll open the meeting to the public. Anything from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Four. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Back to council, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve, but it's, this is one of those, you use it or you lose it kind of deal. It's going to be reduced if we don't take the appropriate steps, so I think this is a reasonable, you know, move forward, and I'm glad to see that we're protecting our volunteer firefighters as well, so I'll motion to approve the agenda item.
Second. Moved in second. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Yes.
Councilmember DiStefano.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon.
Yes.
Mayor Nets.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, an ordinance rezoning areas of Palm Coast Park, development of regional impact. Mr. Reichman. For those of you who may want to take a break, it would be a good time. Mr. Reichman is going to do a long dissertation.
And Mr. Mayor, council, just so you know, I've been talking with staff, and this will probably be the last time you'll see an ordinance with a title that's crafted in this way.
Now, wait a second. The attorney doesn't like him having to do this, so he's finding a loophole in law. I love...
There's no loophole. We're just clarifying. All right, here we go. This is an ordinance of the City Council, City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map established in Sections 2.05 and 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. We're amending the official zoning map for a bunch of parcel ID numbers. Well, actually, we're amending the zoning map for parcels, but they have the ID numbers. Here we go. of Flagler County, Florida, containing 4,677 more or less acres from multifamily residential MFR1 and MFR2, neighborhood commercial, COM1, general commercial, COM2, high intensity commercial, COM3, general office, OFC2, light industrial, IND1, public semi-public PSP, and Parks and Greenway, PNG2, master plan development zoning district, MPD, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Didn't seem, it didn't seem as long today.
I want you to know, I've been asked by some of those companies that have those commercials where they, the person reads very quickly at the end, so this actually has been beneficial.
Have you thought of becoming an auctioneer? There used to be a tobacco commercial that ended with something like that and sold to Americans.
And this is a quasi-judicial hearing.
Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
None.
Hearing none, Mr. Landon, please.
Well, we could follow that up with another long, convoluted planning discussion that Larry presented to you last time, but this is a second reading, and actually Larry's on vacation, so Ray is prepared to answer questions, but this is really just a housekeeping item where we are bringing this approved DRI and zoning case back to you to clean up some glitches that are inconsistent with new state laws. We are addressing the connection of the trail system to the rest of our paths and trails in the area. A few other kind of cleanup items that make the DRI, which is really a state process, consistent with our local zoning. We have nothing new. There have been no additional comments. Ray is here to answer questions. At this time, we believe this item is ready for final approval.
Any council questions?
Let's just say one.
Mr. Mormon.
Do we have a timeline on approximately when the trails in the pass will be done?
I think once it's approved, and the applicant can verify, but I think they want to start the construction project immediately.
Okay. This is...
Other council questions?
Yeah.
Seeing none, we'll open the meeting to the public. Anything from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Five. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Come back to council, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve the item.
Second.
Moved in second. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Yes.
Councilmember DiStefano.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon.
Yes.
Mayor Nets.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number six, an ordinance relating to correction of a Scrivener's error in the schedule for regular elections and primaries. Mr. Reichman.
This is an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for correction of the Scrivener's error in Section Eight Elections, Subsection Four, Schedule for Regular Elections and Primaries, providing for conflict severability, providing for codification and effective date. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Landon.
Mayor, State Council, as you know, the voters approved a change to our charter to have our local elections and municipal elections coincide with state and federal elections. Our ordinance has a specific date in September for our primary. This ordinance just changes that to read that it would be consistent with the state and federal elections, primary elections, very consistent with what the voters approved. This just makes our ordinance consistent with the charter as approved by the voters.
Thank you. Council questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Seeing none, open the meeting to the public. Anything from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Six. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting. Come back to council, additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve the item.
Second.
Moved in second. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Yes.
Councilmember DiStefano.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon.
Yes.
Mayor Nets.
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, an ordinance relating to regulation of pain management clinics. Mr. Reichman.
Pardon me.
000 dot 000010.
Turn too many. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, relating to pain management clinics. Adopting pain regulations of pain management clinics is defined, to be codified as Sections 16, 232 through 16, 237, Article Roman numeral eight, Chapter 16, City of Palm Coast Code Ordinance, providing for definitions, findings of fact, and intended purpose. And supplemental regulations of pain management clinics. Applicability, providing for penalties, providing for severability, and providing effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, State Council, this ordinance was really initiated about a year ago by Flagler County Sheriff, Mr. Fleming. When the concern was over using prescription drugs for illegal purposes, we currently have a moratorium on pain management clinics for two reasons. One of them is to have the state develop regulations to attempt to regulate the clinics, and then also to allow us to have some local regulations that will supplement those. This ordinance does exactly that. Second part, the state actually has stepped up and adopted new laws, so these ordinances are very consistent with that. One of the things that, on our local radio station, I heard this morning was that the statewide prescription drug network was implemented just this week, yesterday or today.
Yep.
So that was one of the programs that was supposed to help in this effort of trying to make sure prescription drugs were used for the proper reasons. Jose is going to give you another short presentation, exactly what our local ordinance is proposing.
Good morning, Mayor, members of City Council. For the record, Jose Papa with Community Development Department. Again, the background is that our moratorium, our current temporary moratorium on pain management clinic expires on December 31st, 2011, and that was instigated at the behest of the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office and other, as we know, state legislature passed regulations this past year, and the Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement agencies have continued to monitor the effects of those new legislation. And the feedback we've received from the Sheriff's Office that, for the most part, we believe that it's working as needed. At one of your workshops, directed city attorney and staff to draft an ordinance based on existing regulations and statutes and other ordinances that are available from other municipalities. When we drafted our ordinance, as directed, we distributed that to all the municipalities and all to the registered, to all the registered pain management clinics in the city. And the ordinance you have before you does include the feedback that we received from those pain management clinics. As Mr. Landon stated, this ordinance is very consistent with state statutes. The definitions you have in there are consistent with state statutes. Exceptions from the regulations are consistent with the state statutes' regulations for accepting certain types of pain management clinics. Essentially, what we want to do with this ordinance is that we want the clinics to provide evidence of compliance with the state statutes. So under, so what the city will do is that we will require a certificate of use as part of the business tax receipt application. And as part of that, they are to provide a copy of their state registration, which will they be required to display. They would need to provide evidence that the clinic, as required by statutes, would have things such as emergency lighting and communications, reception and waiting areas, restrooms, administrative areas, examined treatment rooms, assigned with the name of the designated physician for the clinic, and no outdoor waiting areas, which is something that we put, the City Council directed us to put in the ordinance. So the additional city regulations include establishing a minimum floor area of 1,000 square feet, again, the no outdoor waiting areas, no drive-through operations, no alcohol sales, no loitering, and limiting operating, regular operating hours to Monday through Saturday between 7:00 to 7:00. But it does permit emergency services outside of regular business hours, and those are the only types of services you can have outside of regular business hours. Regulations require landlord to accept some responsibility, that is due diligence in monitoring the activities that occur within the premises that they lease. There is additional regulations for payment methods, no cash-only operations. Pain management clinics are to accept all forms of payment in addition to cash. And as we discussed during the workshop, the part of the ordinance will require that no employee, independent contractor, or volunteer associated with the operation has been convicted of drug-related felony within the five-year period prior to the date of the application for a pain management clinic. And that's to be provided through an affidavit as provided by the applicant for the certificate of use. And consistent with, and under the city statutes, proposed statutes, the certificate of use is revoked if the Department of Health revokes or suspends the registration of a pain management clinic. Under the ordinance, pain management clinics must comply with this ordinance within 365 days of the effective date. Penalties, certificate of use may be revoked for violation of the code, and the effective date of the ordinance is discussed during the last workshop would be January 1st, 2012, which would be right after the expiration of our current moratorium. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. Council questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Meeker.
One of the areas that we were in minor disagreement with, with some of the local businesses, was the issue of checking the volunteers or the workers at the facility for drug-related felony offenses over the last five years.
Background check?
The background checks. Has there been any further discussion on that since we've decided to keep that in the ordinance?
We, well, first, there was one, there was one pain management clinic that had an issue in it, and we did contact them, and I don't think we ever, we certainly alerted them that that portion of the ordinance was not going to go. It was staying within the ordinance.
I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to find out if we'd heard anything back.
We did not get a response, and I believe that the initial conversation was that they were not in opposition to it, it's more of a concern that, pointing out that this is not exactly consistent with what's in the state statutes. And from the discussion we had, we knew that it wasn't consistent, because under state statutes, certainly it was only the doctor that must meet the background check, and so we went above and beyond.
Can you go back to the previous slide in your presentation? Section 16 dash 236, I'm assuming that refers to existing pain management clinics.
Yes, sir.
But if a new pain management clinic were to open tomorrow, or open on January 1st, it would have to comply with the...
Yes, sir.
The ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
It's not a question with respect to the ordinance itself, but over the weekend, there was much talk over the networks regarding doctors who were rushing to set up these clinics. And I don't know if that's come to your attention on that, but there was, there was a lot of discussion over the weekend on network services. So, we, I don't know how much we're looking at doctors, but I think we're looking at clinics as opposed to looking at doctors.
Certainly, doctors who operate within these clinics are regulated already by the state statutes that was passed in the past legislative session. They're still going to be tied to reporting within the database, any prescriptions that they issue, to whom and how much.
Other council questions? Seeing none, open the meeting to the public, anything from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Five. Seeing none, open the meeting to public and from the public, which should be heard on agenda item number seven. Seeing none, approach the podium and close the public portion meeting and back to counsel. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I move adoption of this ordinance.
Second. Moving in second. The roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number eight, a resolution to prove a contact with A.M. Weigel for construction of the Indian Trail Sports Complex Maintenance Building and North Pavilion renovation. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, one of the programs in our prosperity 2021 is to try to encourage visitors to come to Palm Coast. Instead of our families going elsewhere to spend their money, have families come into Palm Coast and spend their money at our local businesses. One of the venues to encourage that is the Indian Trail Sports Complex and the expansion of that complex into the Indian Trails Middle School. And it has been very, very successful. Last two weekends, we've had a soccer tournament and a lacrosse tournament, and the feedback I've received is just people ranting, raving about what a difference it makes to have the quality fields, even in the rain, they worked quite well for the soccer teams, and the size, the venue, et cetera. However, there are some improvements that really need to happen at Indian Trail Sports Complex as we continue to expand the program. We have three items, two of them are on this bid, and Carl's going to describe what those are for you today.
Yes, good morning. What you have here in front of you is just an overall area of Indian Trail Sports Complex and Indian Trails Middle School. And this just shows some of the past improvements. These are the soccer additional field area here and as well within the track. And a few years ago, we built the bridge connection to the school site. This next slide is a blow-up of the sports complex and identifies the three projects before we today. Project number one is there's an existing pavilion building at the north end of the site, and we're looking to renovate this pavilion and close a portion of the covering to create a concession stand area for use by the sports teams. Second project is in the area here. City staff currently has a Conex, one of those box trailers that sits on the ground. They store equipment in it, all around it. We have dumpsters that aren't enclosed, just dirt piles of clay and whatnot. They basically use this area in here for storage of equipment. The second project is to construct a building here and create a storage building, basically with three rooms, one large garage bay area for the equipment items, a smaller room for some of the small tools and hand tools, and then a third room for fertilizers and the spray rig. And there's also some additional site work associated with it. I'll show you some details here further on. Third project is an extension of a roadway. Basically, this is the entrance here, you come in, we have a parking lot in the north, we have a parking lot here in the center, and the third project will extend a roadway from the parking lot out to Bel Air. There's a second driveway entrance here that was constructed as part of a four-lining project. And this, this project is really a joint project with Parkview Baptist Church as part of a cross-parking, cross-access agreement. They will construct additional parking here when they want to expand their church site. They made a contribution to the city for a portion of the cost of the project, and the city will construct the rest of it. This is a project that we will construct a large portion of it with in-house staff, city staff, and we bid out portions of the work, and that's going to be for an upcoming agenda item. Those bids came in yesterday and will be on your next meeting. Project number one, maintenance facility. This is what's out there now. This is that box trailer. This is the equipment, some of the materials. Just shows you some of the existing conditions out there now. This shows the improvements to the area. Basically, it shows the construction of a new building, concrete pad around the building, dumpsters, we have recycled dumpster, two trash dumpsters. We have some storage bins being constructed for clay, sand, mulch. It's going to have its own, you know, separate entrance way. It'll be landscape to conceal, you know, the building, meet our city standards. There's also some additional site improvements, basically preparing this connection of the parking lot for the roadway extension. If you've been out to the site, there's a Little League building that's recently been constructed. I believe they're wrapping up the interior finishes now, but this is the location of that building. We're creating some ADA parking spots to an existing sidewalk here. Outside, this is a larger floor plan of the building. This, like I said, there's three rooms. There's one large garage area. The building's roughly sixty feet by thirty-three feet wide. There's one large roll-up door, there's a couple, you know, regular standard doorways into the building. Gives a large area for all the equipment. We have a smaller room back here for the hand tools, small equipment, and then the fertilizer room with another roll-up door for the spray rig that can get stored in Exterior of the building, this is the Little League building photo here, which is, you know, directly across the way from this proposed building. It's looking to match the existing materials and style of that building. It matches what's out there on the other structures, split-faced concrete block. This has a blue tile roof. Our proposed building will have the same. Project number two is the North Pavilion renovation. This is the existing building that's out there now. It's basically a restroom with an electric room building that it's really, it's foreign, it has a large covered area. We're proposing to, whoops, we're proposing to enclose half of the open area. So we'll still have an area during rain, still gives people a place to go, get out of the rain, but it will enclose the first bay of the, of the covering with similar materials, creates some roll-up windows to serve as a concession area. This is the floor plan. Basically, it shows this was the lot, the open area of the building. We're enclosing that one first bay. Basically, we're creating some counter space, two roll-up windows, one on the front, one on the side, some of the standard equipment, some sinks, some area for refrigerator freezers, hand sink, you know, mop sink, typical items that are necessary, some electrical for some items that may be in here, microwave, or other items that the leagues may want to use. We're just providing, showing in there. This is the exterior of the building. Again, it shows the, this is the open area now, we're enclosing this first one, still leaves this middle area open, gives you access way through the building and access to the restrooms. We have our roll-up windows. It's very similar to what is at the Little League concession building, just your standard roll-up windows, little counter. Roadway extension, it's a joint project with Parkview Baptist Church. It provides a second entrance and exit to Bel Air Parkway, and it also provides a shared additional parking with the church. And the church will construct additional parking when they expand their church facility. Status of this project, like I indicated, city staff will construct the majority of the improvements, and I had currently bidding asphalt paving curves and striping and signage. Those bids came in yesterday and will be coming in an upcoming meeting. Basically, this just shows the alignment of the roadway from the edge of the parking lot, basically continues on, connects up with the second entrance here to Bel Air. That's the end of the show.
Thank you. Counsel questions?
This is Carl. With the construction, are you planning on a security system, cameras, alarm system or whatever? You talking about microwaves and freezers and that type?
Yeah, that building will be connected to a security system.
What about your maintenance?
Maintenance building as well.
As well, okay.
It's not part of the contract, but we have made provisions, we are providing some conduit connection, so it's connected, it can be hooked up. It'll be a separate item that will be taken care of with our city, you know, our security vendor.
Carl, if you could go back to the slide where you talked about the enclosure of the pavilion, a portion of it. I'll keep going. Go, go.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. The restrooms are in the rear, and you're enclosing the first part of that overhead. When they, when people come into that particular concession, they're coming into it, I would imagine, from the outside?
Well, this is the floor plan here. There's a concrete pad around the whole building. The parking lot is on this bottom side, so they can, they can either walk, you know, they can walk straight through. So to get to the restrooms, you're going to either come in from the fields or you're going to come in from the parking lot, and then you can access the restrooms. The concession stand will be served by, there's a concrete pad that'll get constructed around the building. Actually, I think it's existing here. We're putting it, we're adding a new walkway here, but basically, they'll stand at this window and get served at these two windows here. There's a large overhang on the building. If we go back, you can see, it's not clear to see, but there's quite an overhang on the building. I think it's a four-foot overhang, so you're basically still under covering, but that's how that is going to work.
Okay. They won't be walking into the concession area?
No, this is a complete wide opening. It's like ten feet wide. Basically, it's open area that, you know, drinking fountains that are here now are remaining. It still gives people a place to stand if they get a good rain, they can still get out of the, of the weather.
All right. Mr. Lewis, they, they'll walk up to that window on the side, order their hot dogs, take it off and go eat at someplace else.
Mr. Meeker.
I'm glad you got this screen up. First off, a concession stand has been needed out here ever since we built the place, so I'm glad we're doing it. The only concession stand that was allocated ended up at the baseball fields and these areas had nothing, so this is a great addition. Here's what I'm concerned about. These, the two concession stands that are out there for the four fields that exist serve this other purpose of a bailout area for when thunderstorms move into the area. And having been out there with four teams, you know, around six-thirty at night when the storm moves through, I have a, I've always had a difficult time even getting four groups of teams and parents in when the entire bay is opening. And Jim, what I'd really like us to think about at some time soon is some extension of a shed root, something to provide some additional cover to get out of the way of these thunderstorms. You know, we've got the lightning warning devices out there, and so we say scramble off the fields, and then we don't necessarily provide a place. And I've been, I was down at Watts with Park one day handing out uniforms where a thunderstorm rolled through, and not only, we were combining this one tiny area, but we had a lightning strike on a car right next to the area, burned right through the hood of a brand-new SUV and all that. We really need to provide some additional protection for storms, so that's what I'd like to see. Last question, the roadway improvements. I know our system there has a stormwater permit. Does it extend out to where those roadway improvements are going to be?
Yeah, there was a modification to that permit. It was submitted, and we have an active accepted permit for that work.
Additional counsel questions? Open the meeting to public and from the public, which should be heard on agenda item number eight. Seeing none, approach the podium and close the public portion meeting and back to counsel. Additional questions, comments, or a motion? Roll for approval.
And I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number nine, work order with Bellamy Herbert for design and permitting of Long Creek Nature Preserve project. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is another one of our capital projects that we're working on, and you've seen the presentation, but I thought it'd be a good idea for the public to be able to see it on television or the website. So Carl's going to go through a little bit of what the project is. The actual item before you is to hire the design team or the architect to design the park and go all the way through, construction drawings, and the construction supervision when we get to that point. I'm going to let Carl go through this and then maybe add a little bit towards the end if we need to talk a little bit about history and how we came up with this property. Carl?
Okay. This here just shows a few photos from the site. This is College Waterway, and then this is along the backside at Long Creek. Property itself is highlighted here in green. Where is it located? That's on, it's on Palm Harbor Parkway. This is the yacht club here. And what we show in the yellow lines are aquatic routes, our blue trails, our, you know, our water routes to the location. Basically, you can go down College Waterway and then connect up down to Intercoastal, or you can head down Long Creek through various routes and again, connect up with the Intercoastal. Some of the history, back in 2008, there was a purchase of nine plus acres for roughly four and a half million dollars. How was that paid for? We got half the money from the state Florida Community Trust grant for roughly half the cost, and then the Flagler County Environmentally Sensitive Lands Program, ESL, provided the other half of the cost. Back in, our current council goals and objectives, this is listed as a major project. As part of an SCT grant, there was a, some restrictions basically to the monies that were provided, that the city would in turn prepare a management plan and provide certain amenities on the project, basically to develop it into a park site. And there were some very specific requirements in terms of what was to be provided. It even gets into having how many educational classes you're going to have on site, I believe it calls for a dozen a year. Some of the major components are to protect the natural resources, restoration of the site hydrology, stabilization of the shoreline along College Waterway, provide recreational opportunities and urban open space, provide some water access to College Waterway and Long Creek, and provide environmental and historic education programs. As part of the management plan that was prepared, this concept plan was generated that incorporated all of the requirements from the grant. Basically, it's looking to be more of a passive type of park. You know, obviously, you'll have some type of driveway and parking lot. There'll be a building which is more substantial than our standard park buildings, which is just a picnic pavilion and restroom, because this will need to serve as a function of, as our educational facility. We also have some trail systems along the park site, you know, obviously, some gazebo, some overlook here, fishing, you know, boardwalk along the waterway. There's a requirement for a non-motorized boat launch into College Waterway and a kayak launch into Long Creek on this end of the site. It's a very unique site, you know, being surrounded by, we have our long Hernandez Landing Historical Archaeological Site on this end of the site. That is being submitted for National Registry of Historical Places. It's under review now, an application has been turned in. We're looking to incorporate that into the development of the site with some interpretive exhibits, not only for that, but in terms of our ecological, environmental features of the site, with this being an education center, it's going to be more of a learning type of a facility, and being more of a passive, you know, nature park site, you know, part of the requirements of the designers is to provide a project that is LEED certified. So that was built into the design cost to go through that process and the extra steps necessary to get to that level. Current management plan, we've gone forward and we've taken some steps into achieving what the requirements of the management plan. We've gone through and done the removal of invasive and exotic species. You know, obviously, that's an ongoing thing, but we have gone in there and taken that step. We also do have educational programs. Actually, last week, there was a two-day session of students from elementary school that came through, went through various stations. There's the CHIRP program that you're familiar with, with the school district. And currently, for the design, that's tied to what's before you today. And currently, for the design, that's tied to what's before you today, the city applied to Florida Inland Navigation District for a grant to help offset the cost of the design. You know, obviously, they only cover certain portions of the design, and we received the grant for a match of up to $75,000. However, there are some deadlines to that grant. We did request an extension. We did receive an extension, and the current deadline is to have the design and all permits obtained by September 1st of 2012. By approving this today, you know, we're definitely on track and scheduled to meet that goal. The selected firm, as part of our selection process, we went out to our continuing service consultants that were approved with the city, sent out a letter of interest, required them to submit some proposals. There was a five-member committee that reviewed the proposals and ranked them, and the highest-ranked firm was Bellmo Herbert. And after they were selected, we then sat down and went through a very lengthy process to go through a scope of work, because there was a lot. It's a very unique site, and we wanted to make sure we had everything included in terms of details. And then we negotiated a scoping fee. What we have before you today is for the entire contract, for getting through bidding and contract administration, but we'll, we'll be just awarding a purchase order, work order with Bellmo for Phase One, which is to get us through complete design, obtaining of all permits, basically to have a construction set of documents ready to go out to bid for construction. Thank you.
Counsel questions?
I know you said it before. We get $75,000 from fine. Where is the remainder of the funds coming from?
The remainder of the funds were budgeted in our capital improvement program. I do not believe there are park impact fees. I believe they're just part of our general funds.
These are, the balance is from our local property tax that we've had budgeted for some time as part of our capital improvement program.
Mr. Lewis?
Carl, there are two people, two companies are involved in the, in this ranking order that you have here. What gave Bellmo the edge over AECOM design?
It's part of the discussion with them. Obviously, it's a team. They probably have five or six consultants each, because there are various components of the project that, those two firms are the lead firms, are the landscape architect firms that have the park design contract with the city. I think what gave some of them an edge was AECOM. I think a lot of their members in-house, Bellmo went out and sought specifically some of their team members. In terms of, I think, what edged them over AECOM was their design team for the interpretive center for the education building. They, they had similar experience and very good projects, but they could provide us backup, that they had knowledge of.
Yeah, and that was a major part of the, the grant provisions or requirements.
Yeah, to provide an education center, correct.
We have expended money in the past with an archaeologist, Dana St. Clair, to do exploration of this site. He was the one who determined that the Hernandez Wharf, we were a center of commerce back prior to the Civil War. I presume, but I'd like some assurances, that as Bellmo Herbert proceeds, that they will work with Dana St. Clair to be sure that we don't disrupt any of the natural historical presence that might be there.
That is correct. Dana St. Clair is actually part of the Bellmo team.
Fine. By the way, there was part of your team that helped on Bellmo Herbert, but anyway. Can you, Carl, can you go back to your planned view for the project? Right there, great. I've always been concerned about this driveway coming in and out, what I believe is at least at the toe, if not on the slope of the bridge, coming down. And I haven't heard that we have any plans for something like a blinking caution light up at the top of the bridge that says danger hidden driveway below, or something like that, as you're headed eastbound on that road. Do we, do we have any plans? I just think that's just an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, that's obviously something that'll be looked at during design. I mean, this is a very conceptual plan, the exact location of the wetlands. You know, obviously, we're gonna push this driveway as far, you know, this way as we can, but site distance, all those items will be looked at during design, and we understand it is a safety issue, what the final outcome is.
Yeah, if somebody's coming out of that area with us, a trailer of four, you know, kayaks on it, it could be really problematic. And the only other thing that I did see on your conceptual plan up there was, has there been any discussions on how they're gonna be handling stormwater?
Not, not yet. I mean, that, that's very, we have not, we've discussed some options with our consultants as part of our LEED certification, there's some additional, I guess, ways we could look at handling part of that stormwater drainage.
It might be that you could benefit from porous concrete, is what I was thinking in the previous series. But, and lastly, what is included in the Phases B and C? And is the $100,000 basically that's remaining enough to accomplish it?
Correct. Phase B would be our bidding and negotiation assistance, basically getting it out to bid. It's a time, it's an allowance, basically, so if, if time is needed for the consultant to prepare additional sketches or answer questions during bidding that city staff cannot enter, we'll, we'll use, you know, have their assistance. And the bulk of the $100,000 is for construction administration. That covers the LEED certification. It, it covers all the site visits during construction. It is sufficient to get us through, to get the project built and approved.
And from Phases A, B, and C, how much is actually constructed?
Well, Phase A is a complete full design and permitting of the entire project.
The answer, the short answer, I think, is none, right?
Right. Nothing gets constructed. The intent is to build it all at once.
And do we have cost estimates of that yet, or I guess that comes out of the phases that we're dealing with here?
Right. That will get generated during the design phase. We have some overall project budgets. I wanna say it's about $3 million. I'd have to go back and double-check that, but it's in, it's in that range.
Funded?
There's, right now, I believe in, I don't think it's funded in our current five-year C.
The answer is no. That's why. We're not authorizing the full contract here, because until the project's funded, there's no reason to give them the, the work order to go ahead with the construction phase of this.
Permits will be good for five.
Right.
And we'll be able to extend them to nine, so we'll have time.
We believe this project would be eligible for additional grant dollars also, but at this stage, it has to be designed before we'll be able to get construction dollars.
Firdap grants are no longer available, are they?
Not today, but there's other opportunities out there.
Okay. Additional council questions? Open the meeting to the public and for the public, which should be heard on Agenda Item Number Nine. Seeing no approach to the podium, we close the public portion meeting. Go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
At some point in time, this is gonna become a really cool project in this area. I'll motion to approve the item.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Frank, you're absolutely right. I am surprised that the Palm Coast Historical Society isn't here praising this project. I mean, it's interesting, not only is, was there life in Palm Coast before ITT, but there was active commerce at Hernandez Wharf prior to the Civil War.
Active commerce there, couple of sawmills.
Really kind of made history for this area.
Is a lot more than just a bunch of pine trees.
Very good. Agenda Item Number Ten, Resolution approving a transportation impact fee allocation between the City of Palm Coast and Cobblestone Village. Mr. Landon.
I have even heard about this project at home. I think everybody knows that when you turn off of Cypress Point Parkway on the Cypress Edge in front of Walmart, that it's kind of free-for-all, people changing lanes, lanes ending, nobody's real sure where they're supposed to be, but Ray has a solution to this right now as we move forward with the project. So he's going to describe this project so that hopefully we can solve some of that traffic problems in that area. Ray, take it from you.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Thank you, council members. The purpose of this resolution is really to take the impact fees that are generated by the Cobblestone Village Phase Two project, the hospital building and future development that may come, that will eventually come to Cobblestone Village, and actually utilizing those impact fees to do improvements to the Cypress Edge transportation network. It's generally in two phases. The first phase of the project is the roadway construction itself, and the roadway, the roadway construction phase will be done first through the impact fees collected by the Florida Hospital that now is under construction. The second phase of the project will be utilizing impact fees for future projects to do enhancements to the signalization on Cypress Edge and Palm Coast Parkway and on the on and off ramps lights on Palm Coast Parkway in order to synchronize the transportation. The first phase of the project is really adding a needed right turn lane, is to construct a right turn lane that will come all the way up to the entrance that you see now of the medical building. It'll be a right turn only. And then now, the existing lane will be a through lane that will go all the way through, through development project. You will also have a designated striped existing middle lane, which will be a bidirectional lane, which could go right, left, right, left, right, left. We believe that these improvements will greatly improve the transportation network in this area. The second phase, again, would be synchronizing the lighting, and it's actually using fiber optic, and as development starts and you start generating more trips, the need for the future to synchronize those lights will, again, enhance those improvements greatly as future development takes place. In the agreement, there's also an option, once we get the price from, from the applicant to partnership, that we do have an option, if the city wants to construct, we can construct and do that. So with that said, I'm here to take any questions you may have, and I know the applicant, Mr. Watts, is also here.
Counsel questions?
I have one.
Mr. Lewis?
And it goes back to that same question, Walmart and the park, and the parking lot coming out into the traffic. And that's, that's confusing, and it's very, I don't know how you're gonna solve it, because there are no directional signals or anything there, so when it, when the person comes out from Walmart, wants to make a left turn to go back towards Parkway, he has to appear around that right lane that's going to be turning in, and that middle lane that's shooting out. So how do you intend to correct that?
Well, Mr. Lewis, one of the things that, during the workshop, we, I know Mr. Torreiro spoke about us possibly talking to Walmart and seeing if we can make that a right out only. We will try to do that, but also, if you look at the improvements, you know, we took that in consideration when we were working and looking at the design of doing the Phase One improvements. This actually will help. You know, right now, you have one lane, and the person's making that left, and you have the traffic going, something like a little safety area here, when this person comes out, you know, he's kind of in a resting area to be able to make that left, so there is a slight improvement compared to what it is currently.
Well, you know, when, when they come out of Walmart, they're also looking at the business across the street who's also trying to come out, so it's very, very congested right there. To me, if you take the second exit on Walmart, up near the, where the medical building's gonna go, a driver has a better chance of seeing what's coming at him than, than he can in that first exit coming out. So if you look at that, that second exit, then maybe you get some relief there, I don't know.
Yeah, city staff, we definitely agree with you, and that's something that we'll try to work with Walmart on, making those improvements.
Yes, I have one. I guess this is from Mr. Landon. The traffic signal synchronization at the 95 interchange, how is six-lane in a Palm Coast Parkway going to affect that? They gonna play any role? Any state funds gonna be available, or federal funds be available for?
Make Phase Two happen quicker, maybe?
That's, that's actually a very good idea. We can see if we can't get some of the funding for that signal synchronization as part of that, that state-federal project. What we need right now is actually equipment. You know, the equipment's not there. Once the equipment's there, then if you have six lanes, four lanes, whatever that is, the programmers will program it accordingly. But I like your idea of actually seeing if we can expedite that project by getting funding as part of the widening of Palm Coast Parkway. We'll include that.
We could tie it in, we could speed up that second phase.
Yep, yes. Makes sense.
And piggybacking on that concern, I'm assuming that there are sufficient impact fee dollars generated, or will be generated, to cover the first phase of this. Is that correct?
We believe so, sir.
Now, do we have a guesstimate on the costs of the synchronization of the traffic signals? And the question is, how much additional development do you need in the Cobblestone Village to cover that cost, assuming you don't get any state or federal DOT one?
We believe that the, the cost of the synchronization is roughly estimated about $98,000, and we do believe that the next phase, depending on what is going to be constructed, you know, how large a Cobblestone Village may be able to cover the synchronization cost.
The, I wanna point out, the agreement is written that we are not required to do any of these improvements if the impact fees does not cover the full cost. So it can either go into the general impact fee fund or go specifically towards this, but there is no requirement if it doesn't cover total cost.
Well, I think this is a very worthwhile project. That deadhead, if you get past the, the second Walmart exit, that's a take-your-life-in-your-hands.
It's right out and ask.
All of a sudden, you run out of lane.
Yes, yes.
So I think, I think it's a worthwhile project. Any other council questions? Open the meeting to the public and for the public, which should be heard on Agenda Item Number Ten. Seeing no approach to the podium, we close the public portion meeting. Go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve the item.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda items 11, 12, and 13. Does anyone wish to remove any of the consent agenda items?
Can I make a comment without removing something, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
The staff's bringing back the park recreation fee structure thing, I thought was a very good compromise based on the discussions that we've had, and it's a wonderful testament to the ability of the staff and the administration to work with the concerns of the council to address things. I'm certainly aware of other councils and situations throughout 18 districts where the council is not necessarily listened to, and I just think this was a very good working effort between all, all areas involved. So with that being said, I guess I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. This brings us to the public participation portion meeting. Any from the public wish to be heard on any item not on today's agenda, please give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes. Seeing no approach to the podium, including Mr. Carroll, who closed the public portion of the meeting. Thank you very much, I think. This brings us to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Morland, we'll start with you.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Lewis?
I just need an update on the sinkhole, and see where we are on that. I call it a sinkhole, I don't know what it is.
It's not a sinkhole.
Richard.
Mr. Adams will give us a, you know, I'm sure a lot of folks are interested in what those big old trucks are doing there, why we had a cone in the middle of East Nowhere.
Yes, depression in the road is called...
Yes, depression in the road is caused by erosion of the soil under the pavement because of a gravity sewer line failure. So as groundwater filters into the gravity sewer line, it takes dirt in with it. The repair project is, we have the liner, the outfit that does the lining, pipe lining for us, doing an internal lining on the pipe to correct the leak, and then we will cut the asphalt and pump in whatever's necessary to backfill the hole and then repave it. So they worked most of the day yesterday, got most of the internal pipe repairs done, and they should be able to finish that up today and should be back in business by the end of the day.
How, how long a section of liner did they have to do?
I'm not sure exactly how far they're going to go with it, but we're going out, my understanding was we're going out in each direction of the pipes that enter that manhole. There's a manhole.
We're going to, we're going to camera it, or?
Yes. After it's all done, they'll run the camera to check everything, make sure it's sealed off properly.
Given the, the weather as it approaches us, I don't know what your, your timeframe is for completing that, but will that impact the, that time?
Well, potentially it, it could, but more than likely they'll have the liner done. It may be done by now. They got most of the work done yesterday on the liner. And so it could affect our ability to dig up and make the, the actual hole repair, but they may be able to get it done before the weather gets here.
See, I actually think, Richard, just trying to do a little preview of what it's going to be like, a very minor preview of when the lane that we just talked about in front of Walmart is under construction. Then you're going to really see some traffic issues out there during, during construction. Richard's just trying to help people out with a little.
Give them some practice.
Practice, yes.
By the way, it shows you, the, most of the time, I think, these failures are caused by just a tremendous amount of traffic that's generated at some of these intersections. And it was some years back, we had a similar problem right there at Cypress Point Parkway and Palm Coast Parkway. Pretty much same deal, dead center in the intersection. And even years before that, there was a stormwater pipe failure in the area. So traffic, this is why you have transportation impact fees for this kind of issue.
Anything else, Mr. Lewis?
No.
Mrs. DiStefano?
Nothing.
Mr. Meeker?
No, sir.
One item, actually two items. Congratulations to Mrs. DiStefano on Businesswoman of the Year.
Thank you.
Lovely ceremony last night.
Thank you.
I'd ask the press to take note, my next town meeting will be next Tuesday, the 25th, 7:00 PM here in the community center. Normally, we put, I put a notice on the website and asked the press to take note. And in addition, those people have signed up for an email notification, I've been able to email them. Well, I went to my computer this morning to generate the email, the whole town meeting folder has disappeared. So if you're listening or present and you'd like an email notification, you're going to have to email me back asking for it because I've lost my list of however many emails there were. Goodness knows what happened to them. So anyway, next Tuesday, the 25th, 7:00 PM here at, at the community center. Discussion by the city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
One double zero zero.
No?
This one's even better.
This one, this one is, is the same and different, and I'm going to, as quickly as I went through the, the reading of that title to that rezoning ordinance, I'm going to take my time with this because it is convoluted, as the city manager indicated. And the topic would be the lease that the city has for the city offices at City Marketplace and the efforts that your staff has been undergoing to renegotiate that lease. And as many of you are already aware, that, that lease, the city's current lease for its office space in City Marketplace, that lease will expire at the end of this month, October 31st, 2011. There's two main things that I'm going to say, and then I'm going to explain them in more detail. So please bear with me because this is, this is, and this is the short version, okay? So I'm giving you the short version, just to give you a little bit of a window into my world, in the city's world. Number one, the landlord, the current landlord is a company called Aznaco, and they are in Chapter Seven bankruptcy. They have filed for protection under the federal bankruptcy laws. And because of that, there is a stay. That's, that's traditional in any bankruptcy. And that includes, that would, that would include Aznaco or any other party renegotiating and entering, entering into a lease with the city to, to renew the city's lease for its office space in Market, City Marketplace. Well, that doesn't mean that the city gets to stay in City Marketplace for free. It simply raises an issue, where do we put the money that is our monthly rent? And there is a proposal that is pending from the trustee. Trustee is the party that is, is an individual, usually a lawyer, bankruptcy attorney, who's been appointed by the bankruptcy court to, to shepherd and manage all of the assets of Aznaco. And there is a proposal by the bankruptcy trustee to, that the city place the ongoing rent payments, the same rent payments that the city's currently been paying and has been paying under the current lease into an escrow account. The current proposal is that escrow account would be maintained by fiduciary, and the suggestion has been that the law from the Brown Garganese, Weiss &amp; DiAgresta would be a good shepherd for that. And of course, that would be favorable, in my opinion, for the city because it would protect the city as, as we would know where all the money is and have control over. All right, that's, that's, that's it in a nutshell. So let me, if you'll indulge me so you understand where this comes from, a little bit of the background. The reason why the Aznaco filed bankruptcy is because they, they went into foreclosure. I guess all of you are aware of that. And the mortgage company is Branch Bank &amp; Trust Company, also known, commonly known as BB&amp;T. BB&amp;T, back in 2009, initiated a foreclosure action. And it went along such that in October of the next year, October of last year, about a year ago, October 5th, 2010, BB&amp;T, which is not our landlord, it's the mortgage company, holds a mortgage on City Marketplace, they completed their foreclosure action, they won a final judgment, it was $12 million. And then there was a sale, a foreclosure sale scheduled. And if that sale had occurred, then of course, Aznaco would no longer be the owner, would no longer be our landlord, rather BB&amp;T, assuming that they were the successful bidder at the foreclosure sale, would have owned the property. They would have changed from being the mortgagee to being the owner of the property. Well, just before that happened, Aznaco took legal steps to delay that foreclosure sale, and they filed an appeal, and they filed a Chapter 11 bankruptcy. And as, as I'm, just for, for everyone that's listening to this, a Chapter 11 is, is a reorganization. And that's different than a Chapter Seven, which is a liquidation of, of your assets in bankruptcy. Well, that, of course, made its way through the bankruptcy system, and ultimately, the, the Chapter 11 bankruptcy action was dismissed. So that's when the, the lender, the mortgage company, started working with the city to try to renegotiate the lease with anticipation that it would be the owner ultimately, the foreclosure sale would be rescheduled and we'd be able to move forward with them. They anticipated that they would be the owner. Negotiations for a new lease were begun. Aznaco then filed for Chapter Seven bankruptcy to again create the stay and delay arguably the inevitable. All right. That Chapter Seven bankruptcy case was initiated on August 9th of this year, just a couple months ago. Now, this is two, two different terms. The city staff has been working with a receiver that was appointed in the foreclosure action to do the renegotiations and to do the maintenance. The receiver was actually appointed in the foreclosure action by the state court to manage this particular property, the City Marketplace. The receiver has now advised correctly the city that he does not have the legal power to continue with those negotiations. The reason is, is because all of that, all of the property of Aznaco is now within the exclusive jurisdiction of the bankruptcy court, and specifically the bankruptcy trustee. Okay? We can't move forward, even though we have this impending deadline, if you will, this impending end of our, of our, our lease. So the trustee, now it's the receiver now, the receiver's just standing on the sidelines, okay? The trustee is now on the playing field. Trustee is that, as I mentioned earlier, is appointed by the bankruptcy court. Now, the trustee has filed a motion, the trustee has, which is good. The trustee, which is generally, you know, has the power in these types of states, has filed a, a motion seeking the bankruptcy court's permission or authorization to sell City Marketplace. So what will happen is, is that if this motion is granted, the bankruptcy court will dismiss Aznaco's appeal and then will sell City Marketplace. Now, at that sale, it is anticipated that BB&amp;T will be the successful bidder. They will, they will want to protect their investment, and they will have like chips because of the, the amount, they will have a credit, if you will, just like they would have if they were in the foreclosure sale. They'll have a certain amount of credit. It'll be calculated in a different way, but it'll be similar. So according to what we have been told by the trustee, the trustee is requesting that the closing for this sale still has to get court approval. And that hearing is November 9th. So it's coming up, a hearing before the bankruptcy court. The trustee's going to ask the court to, to have the sale, that it take place within three days following the entry of this anticipated court order. And then, within 30 days, the trustee, who will still have jurisdiction, will consult with the winning buyer to, to assume or reject the leases. Now, I guess that's important to talk about that for a second. We have already talked with the representatives of BB&amp;T. As you might expect, they can, feel that the city is, is an incredibly important tenant. So there is no intention from the communications that we received that there would be any anticipation that the BB&amp;T would reject the lease, rather they would want to renew or renegotiate the lease. So we would anticipate that when the trustee consults with BB&amp;T, assuming that it's the winning buyer, that there would be an assumption of the lease. So which, we would continue to, to, the city would continue to have its city offices and City Marketplace. Now, the, with the sale, assuming that the court order is approved, it'll proceed, it'll be completed in November. The new owner, BB&amp;T, most likely, will be in place in December of this year or January. So all of this arguably is outside of the control of the city. This all happens within the bankruptcy court. So really, the only issue is, we want to make sure that we're protected in several ways. Number one, that we can continue to have our folks come in and go to work every morning at the City Marketplace. And number two, we don't want to, it's very, very, very important that we have a agreed-upon, court-ordered place in which to deposit our rent payments, that ultimately will go where they're supposed to go, so that we don't ever have to worry about paying twice. Now, the third thing arguably is that we want to make sure that through this process, there's a single person that will have the responsibility to continue to make sure that the City Marketplace, or at least that portion of City Marketplace in which our offices are located, will continue to be maintained. Because with rains and things like that, there's issues there. All right? So those are the three things that, that are the most important, obvious issues for the city. And there is, what will happen is, hopefully, during this process, will be the drafting and execution in court approval of an escrow agreement. And in that escrow agreement, the city will have clear direction that the rent payments, the current rent payments, will be placed into this escrow account. There'll be a fiduciary, it could be the Brown Garganese Law Firm, that, you know, I think it's a little early to, to tell you folks that that's exactly how that's going to play out. There will be an extension of the current lease terms during the pendency of this process. There's a, there's a company called Asset Preservation Group, they will be, this is what we want and will insist be in the escrow agreement. That company will continue to maintain the property. There will be, at that point, renegotiations with whoever is the new owner. If the negotiations provide that the new rent is less than the old rent, then there will be a refund to the city of the amounts that were placed into the escrow account, which were based upon the old rent, the monthly rent. The escrow agreement's going to have to provide for continuing maintenance. What we will be asking for is that the, that the city, if the city is not satisfied with the maintenance that is being done by Asset Preservation Group, then it can use self-help and can take the monies from the, from the amounts that were put into the escrow for the lease, to pay for those, those repairs. If there is a dispute, then the city will simply put the monies into a court registry, a court registry, which is called an interpleter. And it would be agreed by the parties, again, in this escrow agreement, that that's what would happen if for some reason, during the course of this time, there was dispute over how those monies were to be used, these rent monies were to be used. So.
I was doing really good until I heard Fred Flintstone.
Welcome to the world of being a tenant.
Bill, given all that, as you've said, and, and BB&amp;T becomes the owner, what is to prevent BB&amp;T from now looking for a buyer?
Well, I'm sure that's exactly what they would do. But what would, what would likely occur, what would most likely occur, is that BB&amp;T, in order to have its best chances of maximizing the purchase price, is going to want to have tenants in the property, including a, you know, a tenant that liked the city. So the incentive would be for BB&amp;T to negotiate with the city prior to placing the property on the market. So let's say that they get the property in January, it's all, all of this process is completed in January. They're going to have incentive, just a business incentive, to wrap up the lease renegotiations with the city and then have that in hand when they go out on the market and say, here buyers is a, is a commercial piece of property, and it has the following tenants, and here are the following leases.
Well, I for one absolutely agree that we put the rent in an escrow account.
Certainly.
I am very strongly in favor of it being Garganese at all, because as you allude to, if you, if you don't have strict control over that escrow account, somebody makes a claim under one court jurisdiction, the money gets paid out, and then ultimately, another court says, no, you didn't have the authority. The last thing in the world we want is the city to be liable twice.
Absolutely, that's absolutely.
You see that kind of thing happen with mechanic's liens, where in good faith you make a payment, and then you wind up having to pay a second time. If you've ever had an assignment before, your assignment from the city is to be certain that we don't follow the double jeopardy.
This is a real tricky time, and we've got to, we've got to go through these rocky waters very carefully.
It's, it's the nature of the beast, it's the nature of the business, so.
That's all.
Anything else?
Yeah, that's, I'm sure that's all you want to do.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Reish? I think, I think you've outlined what has to happen, just please keep us apprised of what goes along.
The main thing I'd like to know about is that the next, the November court date. I'd like to know the resolution.
Sure, sure.
On the 9th, I think that was?
Yes, November 9th.
I'd like to know what comes out of that. Just a brief email summarizing it, maybe, a couple of lines.
Yes, council member.
Okay. Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Let me follow up on this from an operational standpoint. And it's, the reason why Bill is handling this is because it is so complicated and, and very, very much in the hands of courts and attorneys. In the meantime, it really doesn't affect our operation where we are. We're just going to continue to have home there at City Marketplace. So the public's not going to see any, any difference. You know, we aren't planning on moving, so as long as we can negotiate a lease, and I'm confident we'll be able to do that. So I don't see that this having any impact on our operations at this point, assuming things can get settled down and things happen in a logical, semi-logical manner for something like this. I do want to stress, though, that the maintenance side of it, I mean, every time it rains, the last time the roof over our IT department leaked, we've all had experience where the elevators just constantly go out. I'm, you know, I can go on and on about the difficulties we have. So trying to make sure that we have somebody that maintains the property. Lighting outside, I hear complaints about now that the time is starting to change and people coming in at night. We will push hard to find somebody that will maintain, not just We will push hard to find somebody that will maintain not just our building, but the overall property, because that's the other thing that's a concern to us.
Is there any risk to the city of bringing a second party in to cover those repairs, and taking them out of this fund that we're talking about, and the future buyer saying, oh, wait a minute, we didn't authorize you, you know, to use those funds for that, we want our rent?
Our first avenue right now is, and I think the receiver still feels obligated to do this, so that's going to be our first avenue. Secondly, I have talked to Bill about if we do have emergency type repairs, life safety type repairs, lighting, those type of things, can the city step up, do that, and then deduct it from the rent, or at least somehow try to get reimbursed for that? So that is part of the conversation that I.
But we don't have the answer to that yet, really.
At this point, as long as the receiver is taking care of that, I don't need to have an answer to it, but I am trying to have kind of the backup plan, because every day seems to be a little different, and every day I'm talking to someone different, so.
If the city manager had only to just talk with the receiver, it wouldn't be a problem. But the receiver has, right, as I mentioned before, has limited powers. So now it's a matter of not just talking with the trustee, but also talking with what we think will be the new owner. See, that's one of the problems, is that we're trying to figure out with whom we should be speaking. So ultimately, if we can have an escrow agreement that will be approved by the court, that order will be, will be the bottom line. You know, the old expression, most, every lawyer has an opinion, but the judge's opinion is the final, final opinion that counts. So that's what really we need to have, is the escrow agreement protecting the city, receive the approval of the bankruptcy court. And that will bind the trustee, it'll bind whoever buys the property, and it'll hopefully include all of the items that we've been talking about today for the city's protection.
And my understanding is the bankruptcy court, in its opinion, takes proceedings over the foreclosure, the court?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, it does. That's the stay. It's a stay, and in other words, it creates one place for all of the discussions about the assets and the debts and the creditors of the party that filed the bankruptcy. And so all of the other arguments that have been going on and outside of the court system or in various lawsuits that may be pending, all of that has to just stop. And all, all that discussion is moved into one place, and that's the bankruptcy court.
Keep us apprised.
Mayor, I had a couple other items under my comments. I had on my list also congratulate Mary for Flagler Businesswoman of the Year award. Quite an honor. Next is a reminder that we do have an election coming up. It seems like, okay, we just had our municipal election where the mayor was on the ballot, but now we do have the two council seats, so everybody needs to be aware of that, and hopefully will vote. All right, Virginia, help me out. I know the election is November 8th, early voting starts.
Monday, 24th.
Twenty, Monday the 24th, through that, through that week.
And early voting is at the library.
24th through November 5th.
Through November 5th.
At the library.
Early voting is at the library. The, on election day, we have six polling places, the same polling places during the mayor election in September. So, and a lot of details out there that you can find at the Flagler County Supervisor of Elections, if anybody wants to know exactly the times and where to vote. The last thing I have is that I have offered, and he has accepted, the job of Finance Director to Chris Quinn. So Chris will replace Ray Britt, or attempt to replace Ray Britt, that is a.
Is she here?
Does he wear weird ties?
No, I think you'll find that part will be a little different.
Philosophical?
You have to get a cowboy boots.
But we are, we are expecting the same philosophy.
Chris, been with us seven years, almost seven years. Very talented CPA. Actually, I think everybody that's works with finance will tell you that Chris did all the work.
Certainly Chris will tell you that.
Yes.
Ray's not here.
As our, yeah, that's.
No defense.
Nobody's here to defend.
Chris has been our lead accountant, and during the last few years, you know, I've been here almost five years, and I know Ray had indicated to me that he intended to retire about this time, which he did, and that he really was leaning more and more on Chris and really trying to mentor Chris to, for this position. I went around and talked to all the directors before making this decision, and unanimously they were all very, very supportive of this. So Chris has very good history and background in our finance department, and our finance department has one of the best reputations, and Ray Britt established a very strong finance department with strong municipal finances. So Chris does have quite a task to maintain, but have a great deal of confidence in Chris and his ability to do that, particularly with the leadership of Ray that he's provided during the, really, the whole life of this city, because he was one of the first employees to come on, so. We, hopefully, will congratulate Chris in his appointment, and very excited about working with him.
Jim, will you be able to fill Chris's position?
Chris will. One of his tasks, you know, I've already given him homework assignments.
Probably.
And one of his homework assignments is taking a look at the positions and the organization, and he has, once again, very talented people, and exactly how those people, what their tasks are going to be, and how they're going to assist Chris, and then what type of person, what type of talent we would need to hire from outside to fill that position. But he's going to be given the opportunity to evaluate that, and we'll sit down and talk about it. That's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Chris, on behalf of the entire city council, congratulations, and you've got your work cut out for you. Mr. Meeker.
Oh, I think with rain coming, it's time to adjourn the meeting.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation.